We're doing on time, six. All right, we'll officially open the meeting at six. The meeting is being recorded. We're just finishing up the warrants.
While you're doing that, I will make a motion to accept the meeting minutes of May seventeenth as written.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will make the same motion for May twenty-fourth meeting minutes.
Motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right. This is a busy.
And motion to accept the executive session minutes for the twenty-fourth.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, I have a signed copy here. Okay, do that.
So it's the only signature line here is this blue one that's on top?
That's correct. Oops, I already signed that one too. And I'll sign that one. So I need the warrants put back in here.
I haven't signed a warrant yet, haven't.
Uh, did you sign these guys up here?
I've signed these two.
And those are them. And then, uh.
Oh, you're okay.
Yeah.
I was thinking, yeah, meeting.
It's not gonna fit in there. Okay, just to be compliant. I see how you roll. Good job. I worked with one of you in ninth grade today.
Did you?
Yep, that was fun. Um, all right. Audience participa- uh, audience participation. Is there anything anyone wants to bring up to discuss? All right. Uh, first action item. So we've got our joint finance committee meeting and we've got some line item transfer requests. It's that time, time of year.
Kathy's on her way, so if we could just.
Do we wanna wait on that?
She gets here.
Okay.
Yeah, because we don't have a call from the finance committee.
No, I wasn't sure if there was someone on.
No, she's not on. She, she's running.
She's coming live and in person? Okay. Um, next up then we've got, um, so this is the one that Doris needs to be here for me to sign. So exercise or not exercise the town's first right of refusal option to purchase approximately, approximately one hundred nine acres of land presently classified as recreation under sixty-one B at thirty-nine Gibbs Road. Um, and the chairman be authorized to execute a notice of non-exercise of option and any other all documents as may be necessary in order to provide the owner with such notice pursuant to the requirement of chapter sixty-one B.
Or we can buy it for seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Why would we want to?
I'm just, that's the right of refusal, right? You get two options, buy it or let it go.
So Josh, will you explain this to us? There's this parcel of land is for sale. They owe back taxes. No.
No, so once it's, once you waive your right of first refusal.
Oh, the sixty-one A comes back to us.
Right, and it's just over twelve thousand dollars.
Okay.
Just means that when we execute that, we expect a payment on some of the sale.
Okay.
For the taxes that we uh, we got abated prior to sale of the land.
Um, do either of you feel, or does anyone wanna discuss us purchasing the land?
I don't think we wanna be in the real estate.
All right.
Not for that size. That's like a hundred acre parcel. It's a big parcel.
That's a big parcel. Yeah.
But it's got a really nice house right in the middle of it.
Oh, really?
Thirty-nine Gibbs.
We could move our city offices out there.
I don't know. I think that's the one with the hangar.
Oh.
Joanne, do you mind letting Doris know that we're gonna sign?
All right, yeah, when he had a delta rider or whatever.
Yeah, on the left.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, from, from the Google, it's very nice. It's a very nice property.
Really?
Yes. I'm, I'm happy for the people that have chosen to buy it, that they, they purchased a really nice location.
Kara's just gonna say the, the form that you're gonna sign.
Yep.
If you can just, it says, uh, place of business eleven Russell Stage Road. Um, it'd be one Russell.
Yeah.
Hall. So if you wanted to.
So there's an air.
Cross it, put one and just initial it.
Uh, let me see where it is.
For the, is there a specific motion we need to make, or is it just on the aforementioned?
Yeah, I was just waiting for.
Town exercises its right of refusal.
The motion is, well, how the agenda reads, um.
I was just waiting until Doris got here so that she could hear it. She needs to hear it.
I'm here.
Okay. So, um, all right, so let me just cross off one or eleven.
So how it reads.
Uh, on the warrant.
On the agenda.
On agenda.
Um, except you decide it's to exercise or not to exercise.
So, okay, so we'll have a motion to, um, execute a notice of exercise of option, right?
No.
No.
To exercise the town's first refu- refusal option. See where it says review and take action?
We choose not to exercise the town's first refusal option to purchase approximately one hundred nine acres of land presently classified as recreation land under GLC sixty-one B. Located at the commonly known address of thirty-nine Gibbs Road and that the chairman be authorized to execute a notice of non-exercise of option and any, on any and all other documents as may be necessary in order to provide the owner with such notes pursuant to the requirements in general law, chapter sixteen one.
What he said. I'll second that.
Circle not exercise on the agenda.
You're amazing. See, it's the glasses.
Bitch. Gotta be.
Um, second, I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so I'm gonna fill out the document date is, um, June seventh twenty-one. You're gonna do the, I don't sign this, you sign this. I just signed this one. It says, it says Doris right there, see?
See that? All right, so you already signed it without me watching you sign it.
But you saw me.
You wish.
What did you sign, Kara? Is it this form here?
I did, yeah, that's the one. And I crossed out the eleven and changed it to just one for Russell Stage Road.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And then I wrote the date inside. All right, so that's you and where, and then that's you.
And that's me.
Sure you got one. Look at you, you came on and fabulous. Look at you.
Okay, so on this seventh day. So what, you personally appeared in the front?
When the undersigned note, personally appeared.
Member of the board.
Yeah, what? On the seventh day of June, blah, 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 before me, the undersigned note of vote personally appeared is mine, doesn't my name go there?
That would be you.
Yeah, okay.
Board chair.
I'm not gonna sign it, I'm just gonna print it.
Yep.
Okay.
I just appeared.
You appear.
Member of the Blaine, uh, who's, which was, what, proved to me through satisfactory evidence of identification, which was, oh, I'm supposed to give you some identification? And do we put what type of identification that was?
Really? I guess.
Proved to me through satisfactory evidence of identification, which was, um.
License.
Personal knowledge.
I was just saying, I know you.
I, but I got, I have my license.
Is it notary? Is it to be notarized?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You have a MAFD on the number.
Okay.
Or personal knowledge. I know you're not a doppelganger.
Doris, Doris, she's a C book.
She's not right, so she needs to show that she saw something.
All right, not bad.
Did you see that? That looked like Kara out there.
MAFD, I'll just write the number down.
Yeah, okay.
Kara's got a doppelganger.
Oh, I do. She's in the, yeah, she's working for the White House right now.
Okay.
We'll circle back to that.
All right.
Then I said, you sign it involuntarily, right?
Yep.
Okay. So now I'm gonna sign this.
Was your motion made while I was walking? Yes, uh, we, Eric read right off the.
All I did was, uh, off a meeting minutes.
Yep.
I read it and I cross out to exercise, cross out exercise. I chose the not exercise option.
Of course you did.
And that's that's the motion right there.
Okay, so it's not all right, sign.
You're good. You wanna, do you need this off?
No, Josh is gonna want that. But you want that. I want this. Okay. Good, thank you.
Thank you, Doris.
All right, so, um, now we can do the line item transfers.
Yep.
So what I'll do is I'll go through, uh, each one and then we'll get an approval or not from finance and then select board and is it just the one?
No, so that, there's three requests on that one form.
Oh, I see.
Following that form are the invoices.
Got it.
The supporting documents for those requests.
Okay, so we have a request, uh, to transfer from town hall utilities to old town hall expenses, uh, the amount of fifty-six dollars and eighty-three cents to pay.
The ever source bill, it is, the ever source bill does read seventy-one sixty-five.
Difference of this?
So it's, yeah, it's, there's a balance left in the old town hall expense, so we're gonna just ignore that.
Um, so I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second or the second, oh yeah. Is this for June or is this for May?
This for June.
Okay, so we're not gonna see it again.
I shouldn't.
Um, finance committee? Select board?
Yep.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, today's the seventh. Okay, uh, make a motion to, um, transfer from the recreation committee.
No.
No, to the recreation committee. Thank you, I'm from town hall. From town hall, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and sixty-four cents to cover the rest of our glorious Memorial Day.
Go over budget on ice cream.
Oh, heck, yeah.
Awesome, uh, that's fine.
Sort of, sort of telling all the people that were here to go away because there were more than sixty people here.
That's awesome. I mean, I'm glad they had that many people.
Yeah.
That was a good day.
When I, here came down and said, there are a lot of people here. I looked up the hill.
This crowd, I know.
Especially even as cold as it was. It was really nice to have them.
I know.
So, yeah, and Joanne's done a good job. We maximized on the recreation budget, memorial budget, um, and just have a balance left here, three thirty-three, sixty-four to cover the.
Yeah.
The, the
What's more important than ice cream? Yeah, no, I know, rec is always great.
She had it on target. You did say, you like, I think, I think we double.
I think we doubled our ice cream fund.
Yeah. Pretty close, really close.
Next year we can do, I mean, I like their ice cream truck, but it's pricey. We could always do an ice cream truck, which is just like the, the packaged ones. I mean, it's not as exciting, but you know, we save us a couple hundred bucks.
Maybe we can just get a radio that makes that sound.
And then we'll just bike up and hand them out. Perfect.
Or we can play a, who's that, um, Van Halen's Ice Cream Man on a loop.
It's not the same. So there's a motion on the floor, finance committee.
Approves.
Um, select board?
Yes.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to move, uh, from town hall utilities to external IT, the amount of three hundred fifty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents, which is to Iron Blender Studios for web I updates for twenty-one.
Have we?
That's Wendy.
Yeah, have we captured that for next year's budget, just to?
I sure hope so, but I got pretty close to the budget though.
I know, I know.
The IT budget?
You're, you're rubbing two nipples together and coming out with a dumb.
Man.
Um.
Last year, we were, we were, we were transferring like
Oh, I know.
Thousand here, two thousand there. It's just like, why isn't this balanced?
You're transferring.
Yep, yeah. Uh, finance committee? Select board?
Fine.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
So that's it for year end line item transfers. We might have a couple more, um, particularly around mowing and cleaning, so we'll keep an eye on that.
Okay. All right, um, is, do we have any other business with the finance committee?
No, except that they have a mini town meeting they're gonna be presenting at tonight, so hopefully you guys can get through your business tonight and make it seven o'clock.
That's the one.
Kathy has his whole presentation ready to go.
The difference. We don't want to know before now.
We got five minutes to prepare.
Let's get him, let's go.
Okay.
All right, um. So next up, we've got the review and take action, approving, so I will make a motion to approve the vocational application of Michaela Jake, uh, to Smith Volk that was received after the district deadline. Is there a second for discussion?
Second.
So, um, apparently this will not alter our budget, Josh, right?
Right, so on the third stapled page, you'll see an email there with, with some writing notes. WTA, that's Westfield Technical Smith, that's gonna be the budget in twenty-two.
Smith vocational.
For Smith Vocational. That's our lineup of students expected to attend.
Mm-hmm.
So, how did Kayla, Michaela was already planned for, she just, the family didn't submit the tuition application on time, so it's, it's already planned for in our budget.
Okay, good.
It's not like we got a new student.
Yep.
We're gonna go, you know what I mean? Um, so there's not anything we need to do on our end to well, at least at this time, um, no budget concerns here.
Okay, good. This has happened before, but we've had to actually move money. So this is a cleaner.
Well, that's, that's why they do this process.
Yeah.
Because there's a deadline after we've already put our budget together, if we, you know what I mean?
Yep.
So what I would like to see is, um, first one's on us for free, right, which is they're lucky we planned for them because they didn't plan this. Okay, so, um, I think we already have the motion to talk about this, but I would like to see in accordance with that, that the town also send the family a letter to say, hey, we approved it. But you need, you need to meet the deadlines because if we don't budget for it, we're not gonna pay for it in the future.
I think someone's is the family on, online listening in currently? I don't know who's four one three five five two eight zero seven six.
I don't know if I would, I wouldn't be comfortable signing a letter saying we're not gonna pay for it in the future. I would just say it.
For budget planning.
I think it's important that people are aware that it does require some finagling on our part when someone is late on, when someone misses the deadline for something like that, we haven't budgeted for it, and it does create issues for us. I don't wanna say we will not approve it because I don't think that that's accurate.
Well, it's important because it's twenty thousand dollar.
Oh, I totally agree.
It's twenty thousand dollars a pop.
Yeah.
Right, so, I mean, if, if every child in town chose to go to Smith Vocational School.
Crazy, yeah.
Right, that's a significant burden as a town that we would bear.
But we would also reduce our gateway budget.
It's also a significant, it's a significant task to plan our budget, and typically this application is due, what, first April? I mean, it's got extended. Early in the year, right? Got extended for COVID, but we've seen this before where we've had these meetings in April because someone missed the deadline.
Mm-hmm.
And it's fortunate that we we, we had to find money then. This time we don't.
This time we don't, yeah.
Because we, we planned ahead for that.
And I think that going forward, our plan has sort of been to over budget. Isn't that what we've been doing, is sort of over budget for that?
Well, no, actually, there'll be a line item transfer request, um, to pay for, um, vocational bills that we, that it's been slightly under budget.
Oh, we've been under budget.
For this year, but the roster is less than what it was last year, so.
So I definitely agree with sending a letter and just letting them know that it potentially can be a significant budget issue for the town.
Right.
Absolutely.
And I, you know, I mean, I was probably a little heavy in that first thing, but it's just, you gotta let, let folks know that they have to plan this.
Absolutely, yeah.
The town has to plan to support your child in school.
And I don't think people understand the repercussions of that, yeah, you know, that it does become a, a whole budget, and for a small town like us, that's a lot of money.
And if we, I, I think we moved our all-town election further back, but I think, you know, we usually have those coincide.
Yep.
And here we are in June. If this had happened in May, our budget's set, and we would have no choice but to deny because we've already set the budget and the town voted on it. Done deal. We're not paying for your kid to go to school.
Yep.
And I, I don't, I don't want people to get caught.
Yeah, so that could be something too, is, you know, to let them know, like, if it happens after the budget's approved, then there's, we can't do anything about that. Unless we went to a special town meeting.
Which would take forty-five days notice, and now your kids, you know.
Yeah. Am I signing something here?
No, no.
No, this is, this is where Dave signs.
Yeah, Dave does this thing. Once he knows that you guys are good, he proceeds forward, what he, what he needs to do.
Signature of the superintendent.
So there's a motion on the, uh, table, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, next up we have we're gonna take action, contract between the town and Dave Waldron. Okay, so
I don't know if you guys wanna.
For discussion, I would do motion to approve, and then we can discuss it.
Well, I don't know if you, if you, are you ready to approve, or do you wanna just continue to discuss an executive session, come back, then approve, or I mean, if you're ready and feel confident with.
Well, we had, we had a discussion, second your motion, okay, we had, we had a discussion about what we were gonna do in executive session. Did you meet those objectives in our contract?
There was, uh,
Yeah.
The, the, you mean the, the terms that were.
The salary and the terms, right?
Yeah, he, he accepted them all.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's no issue here. We can just approve it.
The only discussion was the difference between a three-year and a one-year, and we're sticking with the three-year.
Yeah.
Well, right, so I, council came back and had, had multiple edits, mostly cleanup stuff and wording.
Yeah.
And, and lawyer jargon, um, but the only real thing of note that he mentioned was, um, being clear of whether or not we're gonna do annual.
So it was attorneys that were looking for one year and not three years?
Well, so.
Or it was Dave?
No, it wasn't Dave.
Oh, good, okay, yeah. I'm glad to hear that.
No, no.
So I was wrong, it wasn't Dave.
That's all right, it's still a modesty strength, but.
Okay.
It's, it's, we're saying the same difference. He's just saying, you know, council is saying, just make it one year and you just do your annual renewals.
I'd rather.
I'd rather not.
I'd rather do a three. We had a one year prior with Curry and we changed it to three years because it just made more sense with that type of position.
Well, what, what council is saying is that it's the same difference.
It's not.
Because you're doing an annual, right, and there's a counter argument footer.
Right, and the argument is for anyone who's seen Moneyball, any manager, any manager who manages a team on a one-year contract knows what message management sends with that statement.
Yeah, I know, I'm off, I wanna stick with the three personally.
Yeah, I, we just stick with the three with a one-year, one-year renewal of performance.
Okay.
That's our policy.
Is that what this says?
That's what this says.
What we should go with.
What does it say that, just so I?
Um.
Under term.
Termination.
No, term, term two.
The term of this agreement is up to three years of annual renewals. Okay, we're good.
All right, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Wait, is this the wrong one? No, this is not the right one I'm about to sign.
Not the one with all the track changes. Sign the clean version.
Okay.
All right, congratulations, David.
Congratulations.
Here you go.
When does he start?
July one.
We're not gonna start him now?
Well, he's, uh.
Well, I don't know, do you want?
Screen.
He's kind of following up with, um.
He's getting cross-trained already.
Yeah.
Right?
He's training with Rainey right now. We might as well finish training, right, and then start on the clean year, so we don't have to deal with.
Um, let's talk about an executive session.
Okay. Um, all right, next up, we've got review and take action on the contract between the town and GZA Geo Environmental for drafting, design, and rehab plan for town commons.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I'll make a motion to approve so we can discuss. I think I'll just, oops, my children are not in the playground. Somewhere in the building. Okay. So, uh, this is.
Yeah, so this is the, uh, the design work that's gonna take place at town commons that we procured on.
So it's less than we originally thought because we didn't need the work for the road change.
Right, there was a thought that we'd have to do a, no, not the work for the road change, the, uh, the vehicle count.
Yeah.
The traffic stuff.
Yeah.
Do you already did the traffic?
So we met with DOT, DOT said, we don't need to do traffic studies, not necessarily requirement, so we eliminated that from the scope.
Perfect.
Your time turned out to be, um, a lot less than anticipated.
Great, how much less?
Great. It's, uh, almost, it's eighteen thousand seven hundred ninety-four.
I think it's like seven grand less.
Yeah, it's significantly less.
Okay.
So this would be, um, FY twenty-two budget. It is budgeted for. Basically, the strategy was since the school department level funding didn't increase, thought that maybe we can, uh, take what we need for, um, this work.
Okay. Given our large turnout for Memorial Day. Yeah, we'll be, have a nice town common to celebrate.
Had one of the best ones we've had in quite a few.
Yeah, it was really nice. All right, um, all of, any discussion? More discussion, all in favor?
All right.
Aye. There you go. Look at us, we're totally on time. Uh, okay, so we have some appointments, but we also have some amendments to the previous appointments, so we're gonna have to do these one at a time. Um.
Um, you don't have to say amended. I mean, base, this one right here, if you can just make a motion to rescind.
Do we have to rescind?
There's four that have to be corrected, Josh. Right here, I have a list.
Amended appointment to rescind previous motion.
Yeah, it's not on the.
Oh, it's not here, okay.
Only I get the list.
When I started going over. Mary came back to me and said I got the wrong dates from the arts council.
Okay, I will make the motion, sorry, just to be clear. I will make the motion to rescind, uh, Nicholas as the plumbing and gas inspector assistant for term July one to June thirty, twenty twenty-two. Let's, we send that motion.
Well, I know what she's saying is that there's, I guess, four different ones, so if you can take it as a.
Yes, what happened at the, at the previous one was the agenda said Nicholas as plumbing and gas inspector. It did not say assistant, so we have to rescind him as the main.
And we have to add, and then appoint him as assistant. Okay.
Oh, that's not how this one reads.
Yeah, it's, it's right, it's written.
Okay, so I will correct my motion. Motion to rescind Nicholas as the plumbing and.
You're afraid to say his last name.
Yeah, Chuzeno?
I think, yeah, it was like Cousino.
Cousino. Kuzino, it was like TJ, only different, that's right. Nicholas Kuzino, to plumbing and gas inspector for the term July one, twenty twenty-one through June thirty, twenty twenty-two.
Second, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now the motion is to appoint Nicholas Kuzino to plumbing and gas inspector assistant for that same term, July one, twenty twenty-one.
There you go.
Three, twenty twenty-two.
Perfect.
Okay, so, um, we're, next up, motion to appoint Nicole Davio to arts council for the term of July first, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
And that is the rescind as well. The date they gave me was different.
Do we need to rescind, or can we just make the motion?
Well, it's a few.
For this for Nikki?
Yeah.
So are you going down the agenda, only they're different from what's on the agenda?
Nope, on the agenda, it's just, there's a note here that we had given the wrong date last time, so I think if we just make this a motion, we don't.
Motion to correct the date.
Okay.
Got it.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, next up is Sonia, and that is, she's a full member, so motion to rescind the appointment of Sonia Hutchins to zoning board for appeals as an alternate. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I, motion to appoint Sonia Hutchins to the zoning board of appeals for the term July first, twenty twenty-one through June thirty, twenty twenty-three.[1708.08]
With full voting rights, as a privileged member.
Uh, is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next up, Sue Racine, wrong dates, we're correcting the dates, so appoint Sue Racine to Arts Council for the term July first, twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty-two. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next up, we're gonna, uh, motion to appoint Dave Waldron to Emergency Management, the term July first, twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty-two.
Um, caveat.
Second for discussion?
Yeah, second for discussion. Um, I think both appointments should be contingent upon him signing that contract.
Okay, contingent upon, uh, completion.
Of the contract, yeah.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, motion to appoint David Waldron to Highway Superintendent, uh, contingent upon him signing the contract for the term July twenty-one through, should this be through?
June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright.
Oh, is there another?
There's another one, oh, and sorry, this one's here, but not here, uh, motion to appoint Justin, how do I say your last name?
LaFrance.
LaFrance, that's much easier than I... Um, to the Recreation Committee, um, for the term of July first, twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty-four, oh, there's...
Woo! Landed that one, didn't we?
Second for discussion?
Second and vote aye.
All in favor? Congratulations.
Let's remember, slaves don't get fired.
Uh, do we have a COVID nineteen update?
Nope.
Okay, do we have, oh, we do have a Shepherd Farm update, right?
Yeah, um, go ahead, did you wanna?
So, um, no, I, you know the details, right, I have it in here, I just haven't...
Well, the only update is that the grant's been officially submitted.
Woo-hoo!
I think, uh, what did I say, seventy-five thousand?
I didn't realize it was that expensive for, um, feasibility study. She's Louise.
Well, somebody's gotta make money, and it won't be us.
Um, can you send that out in your email that you sent to everyone, because there's some folks in town that are consistently asking questions about what's going on with Shepherd Farm? Can we, like, include, like, a regular Shepherd Farm update?
Sure.
Shepherd Farm update, nothing to report.
Exactly. Yep, that would be handy, handy. Uh, Josh, do you have more unfinished business?
Um, do I?
No, we've got your contracts.
It's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda.
But I got it, I got one right here.
What?
Yeah.
Smells like money.
Joanne, thank you.
Um, July first. It's only a one-year contract.
So you, you removed all the interim?
Works for the Oakland A's.
Hey, one year, three years, however...
Three years, thank you very much.
Me, the council, I'm like, ah, so I do now one year, do I do three, how do I?
If we say three years, it means you have to stay for three years, you can't leave, even if you get nominated for mayor.
Well, no, because in the agreement, it says that as long as I'm here, I can't, um, serve on an elected role.
Somewhere else. So...
Nicole said she was gonna start to support your, uh...
A couple of people.
I think we should, uh, we should put a caveat in here that, uh, if he is elected, that the, uh, he will hold the town accountable.
Holyoke.
Right?
Mm-hmm.
That, if elected to mayor, that he will hold the town accountable for paying to find his replacement.
Oh, yeah. And then he has to give us a good spot in the parade.
And like, first, absolutely, we're done first.
Yeah, exactly.
We walk with the mayor.
So you can start walking first.
Oh, can we walk with the mayor? That would be so exciting. Alright, um...
Right.
Yeah, I can have that on your next agenda.
We should put this up for action item, yeah.
So you guys can talk about it in the executive session if you want, we have to, yeah.
We will start a new practice, that any town walking in the parade has the opportunity to host the mayor, so the mayor could ride on one of our fire engines to set a standard of community outreach.
Perfect.
I'm sorry, I got distracted, did we vote to authorize this?
No, we are gonna put it on as action item for our next agenda, so it's your homework.
Did we even have money in here to find?
Um...
We didn't agree to any kind of pay.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, what was budgeted for in twenty-two, the, um...
Probably have to lock it down here. Just to make sure.
With the annual increase determined by the town, based on?
Well, we should probably, if it's gonna be a one-year contract, we should just lock it down at the number, so that, uh, somebody who, that comes in on all-town meeting doesn't go, one dollar.
Oh...
I can have it for you next week.
So we could, or we could lock it down at the two point two-five increase?
Either one, I just think, we lock it down, and we have a contract that we have to execute, whether some bozo comes in and makes it a one-dollar one.
I think that's, yeah, that's a good idea, um, but then we could two-point-two-five increase with, um, do we wanna call it bonuses to be, to be negotiated based on, um...
Performance?
Annual performance evaluation? Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Well, so, what's there is the two-point-two-five that we budgeted for for twenty-two, but in there also includes language, annual increases based on the...
Yeah, I see that.
Yeah.
Right, we just wanna word it differently in a contract format, so...
We just wanna make sure that...
No different than Dave.
Well, I don't know, she's saying bonuses, I'm not asking, no...
No, no, I know, I just, no, but this year, this year, the select board agreed to add more than the two-point-two-five based on the amount.
Why did you put the two-point-two-five?
Did you? You didn't?
He didn't follow our instructions, we should probably fire him.
Based on the amount of grant money that you brought into the town, we budgeted for, so we wanna be able to be flexible to say, you know, and add some incentive to town administrator.
So we had the five, this five, I, I did present it to the Finance Committee, the five percent, that was the requested, but when we were trying to...
Did zero as well.
Yes, yeah.
He did that to himself, you guys can go ahead and say...
But you guys said five, but and then I think we went with the two-point, two-point-two-five, because the budget at that time didn't support it, but, you know, there were changes here and there to place, but we just stuck with the two-point-two-five.
Let us re, let us rewrite that line in the contract.
Yeah.
We'll solve this problem.
But, uh, I do want you guys to be at the mini-town meeting, it's six thirty-six, and I know you have executive session stuff.
We got time, alright, do we have new business?
The answer would be no.
Fabulous, uh, motion to, we don't have to reconvene for mini-town meeting, we just go...
You gotta reconvene for union contract approval, right?
Uh, we, yes, we will.
We can't approve it in an executive session?
You have to come back out.
We can't, we just, if we approve it.
Okay, so motion to go into executive session, uh, to later reconvene to, in accordance to GO thirty-A, section twenty-one, A two, discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the government's bargaining or litigation position, also, oh, there's three of them.
Uh, we don't need the second one.
Okay, executive session to consider the discipline or dismissal of, or to hear complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual. Is there a second?